A health fare related item.
I'll second that and I I appreciate HR's efforts to do that for employees.
Yeah, that was well done.
Well, very well.
Very well communicated.
I also appreciate the coordination with the hospital on that.
Okay, next, this is a payment to DLH Mechanical LLC. This is in regards to the backhoe for the surveyor. He did not have money in his line to pay this. He came up, saw me and said that the commissioners told me to find a place to pay it.
Yeah, 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 we I'll verify that.
I found a place to pay it. And that's in your and and we're bringing it for approval here because it's for his office coming out of your budget. So again, just to cover ourselves.
Right.
And that's in the amount of three thousand eight thirty-eight fifty for the repair of a backhoe. Thirty-eight thirty-eight fifty.
Where are you taking that?
Four-two-one-oh-oh. Which is, I believe, that infrastructure.
Line solid, I'm sure. Okay.
Where's DLH located?
It's I think that's New Spaum.
That's New Spaum Mechanical between between Burn and.
Think it's on three hundred or three fifty south, maybe. Think it's three fifty south.
Good deal.
I moved if we uh paid a DHL mechanical three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight fifty and repaired a backhoe for drainage.
Okay.
We had forty-eight thousand dollars left in that account.
Yeah.
We're good.
We thought that was a decent place to take it out of.
Motion by Doug, seconded by Stan, that motion passes.
All right. Now, I had sent you all the clerk report from Shelley Bright.
Right.
If you would if you would want to enter that into the record.
Does that have any questions? We have the expert here with us.
Have any question? I. Stan, you got a have a problem with again?
No.
Move we I move we accept clerk's report monthly.
Yes. Motion by Doug, seconded by Stan, accept clerk's report, and motion passes.
Okay. I laid before you prior to the meeting, the monthly treasures report. Uh, treasure buyer noted that yesterday was the or I mean, the tenth was the last day turning claims. I can attest that people were lined out the door most of the day.
That's mine.
Uh, somebody was. Somebody was coming in, is always walking out and walk in to pay their taxes. So, at any rate. I would seek a motion to enter that into the record as well.
I'm a problem, Stan.
Motion by Doug, seconded by Stan, and under the treasure report into the record, move passes.
Hey. Tony, you did have a bus load, didn't you?
It wasn't mine. Okay, next. I had I had emailed you all. Uh, I think I copied Clayton and Mark and Brooke on this, I'm not sure, but anyway. FIT and C-Vet. C-Vet is commercial vehicle excise tax. And then the other is financial income tax. There the law changed. And if you look on what I sent you and I gave you a paper copy, Doug. The county general gets the amount. We we receive according to this one that you see here that I gave you. The county had received twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-five. And that is broken down where county general, it's broken down by the tax rates. And county general received nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three-eight. Health Department six forty-eight seventy-two, park and rec four oh four ninety-three, cume port house one fifty-seven oh one. Cume cap development twelve sixty-eight forty-nine, cume bridge two thousand eight ten cents. Reassessment five fifty-seven eighty-one, cume gel twelve thirty-nine fifty-six. The new law states. If you want all of those dollars, the entire twenty-six one fifty-five to go into county general. You don't have to do a thing. We just our office automatically does that, just puts all in county general. However. I recommend, and this has to be in the minutes, have to take action on it. I recommend that those county government entities continue getting the amounts from those. Such as they have been. Uh, they're not tremendous amounts, but. They may be used to getting that money and have a earmark for something when you think of park and rec especially. Uh, and we're not talking, we're talking what? Seven, less than seven thousand, maybe? That goes in there. If you. If you want to approve, see how I have that word in here. Here here's the motion that I would need if you want us to continue sending to the government units. A bottom motion by whoever and seconded by whoever to approve the FIT and C-Vet revenues continue to be distributed as they have been in the past regarding the county government recipients. That will allow us to keep doing this the same way we're doing it.
Why why would we not go along with that? There's no reason.
I if if some if some counties feel like. They want to put it all in county general and use that extra six or seven thousand when they get it for something else, I guess, I bet it's.
But we we've been. You're asking us to to make, well, you're not asking us, you're giving us an opportunity to do it the way we've always done.
Yes, yes.
I have no problem with that myself, but Steve, Stan, what do you guys think?
Yeah, no, I don't know that there's anything in particular. That we need to change as far as. Cause that's based on the on individual.
Their tax rate.
Levis.
And and yeah, and our thought was, we're gonna have some people come and ask, hey.
Where's it at?
Where's our money? Where's our C-Vet money? Where's our hit money?
Yeah, no, I I I was.
This is money from the state.
This is from the state. I think I have a copies here if you guys want it.
Okay, yeah.
Uh. Motion stands?
Yeah. It's all right here. If you want any copies for you to jam.
So, motion by Stan, seconded by Doug, to continue to distribute those funds as we have in the past.
Very good. There's one thing also. Clayton, since you're here, were you guys going to do resolution on the housing thing? I'll leave this here because I've got you, I gave Mark a couple of things as well. Okay, gentlemen, you should have received your meeting dates. For twenty twenty-six. Uh, there were two. There were a couple of Tuesdays that you had to go to Wednesday because of holidays or voting. Uh, one was May sixth, one was November fourth. Uh, otherwise, the dates that we sent would be the dates for your meetings. Same as same as always. And that would be resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight. Which would make.
Does that have any questions about meeting dates for next year?
No, I think we've worked at those. We we had we had two options and voted on one.
Yeah, I think we we.
Well, that was the holidays. These are your actual meeting dates. It's it's every Tuesday.
Meeting dates as presented.
Second.
Motion by Doug or motion by Stan, seconded by Doug, to adopt the meeting dates as presented. The motion passes.
All right, let me. Let me see, the other thing Mark and Clayton are gonna do. Nate. Do you know, he gave you all.
Insurance report, yeah.
Did you get it?
We got it.
You got it?
Got it.
Obviously, he's not here to present this, but I think you heard much of this in the council meeting.
Right.
And I told him that I would. Uh, that you guys would need to take action on his request for a grant. Or a grant application from NDOT, be a matching grant. Uh. The amount of the match is a hundred ninety-four thousand six eighty-eighty-six out of Cume Bridge. Uh, for a total of thirty-two projects. And the council did approve this at their meeting, it would simply need your all's approval as well.
So, Lou. Second. Motion by Doug, seconded by Stan to uh prove the. Application for.
NDOT grant.
NDOT grant as presented in Nate's.
You're going to have that. But you all three will have that.
Okay.
Okay. Steve has three, two places to sign, you each will have that second page that he will sign.
Okay.
Hey, just a stupid little thing, this this still lists me as chairman.
What is the meeting dates?
Yeah, I I just crossed out chairman.
We uh, you know, we promoted you while you weren't looking. Now, I think Linda just went and.
Yeah.
Copied last year's and just forgot to take.
So that's why I say I just.
Yeah, we'll we'll change it.
I just crossed it out.
We'll change it.
Preview of things to come, Stan.
I don't know, Steve, you're hanging in there. That way you could a few more phone calls than.
Let me uh send an email up to Glenda now about that. I should have noticed that myself.
One time on that one, Stan.
Make sure. Obviously, you've heard. Uh, all of the grants. That were done. This goes with this big.
Right, health department grants.
Um, EMA and health department, right? Uh, I told them I would finish up their grants also with you guys, if that's okay. Uh, again, you were here, you heard it. Holly's health department grant is for emergency preparedness, it's one that Carla had uh received when she was here. Uh. And. The council did approve that at their meeting, so it would simply need your all's approval as well and Steve's signature.
Need a motion on that grant application?
I'll second.
Seconded by Doug on the.
Twenty thousand dollar grant. I'll leave this open here, signature news. Right. And then EMA presented us with five different grants, but the council approved all the grants at once. Uh. Do you need me to go through what they all were again?
I I I'm I'm good, were you guys okay?
So this would be, this would be.
I'm just curious what the amount.
Keep in mind, there will be five places, five different ones for you to sign. And this is only the chairman.
You guys, okay, those are the grants, remember, to help fund the um the the app that. Were they all related to the app, right?
Not all of them.
App and the vehicle, that's right.
There was a vehicle in there, there was.
Couple on the grant, I know.
Couple on the app. Communication system analyzer for county radios.
That's right, yep.
Did you make a motion on those five, Stan?
Oh, I haven't yet, but I can.
Yeah, that's the county wide app.
I make a motion to approve all five grants as presented.
I'll second a motion.
Okay, motion by Stan, seconded by Doug.
So, five different places, Steve. Should have brought your stamp down.
It's okay, I'm good.
Or I guess I could have brought Stan. After Glenda promoted you.
Don't count your chairmen before they're.
Just buy an auto pen.
Yeah, that's all.
Let's not do that.
Yeah. We could start partnering people.
I don't know.
Okay, let me make sure we don't have any further chaos. Okay, I think that. That is all that I have, the the rest of stuff that I had, I gave to Mark and Clayton for for them to do because they were the ones. Kind of generating that, I guess. So, yeah, that should be it for me, finally.
Pretty good shot.
Hey.
So, we'll sub, it's almost ending. Just the very last one, who reports parts, you guys' signatures, but the rest of them are all attached.
Linda, go ahead and bring it up here so they can sign it. This is the meeting dates with the correct chairman.
Sorry about that.
Stan thought you promoted it.
Oh.
Here's the chairman, right here.
You have new name too, Doug.
Oh, okay.
That's the correct one, Doug, if you want to sign that one.
Okay.
You can retire these guys.
The the other ones in your packet are the one we signed before.
Here's the old one.
I'll take that.
You can keep that one.
I'll keep that.
Nothing changes except chairman.
Right, okay, Stan, the.
I'm saying you had a good five minute go of it.
My claim to fame, five minutes of fame.
Make sure you pay me that extra money.
Yep, there you go.
This is, okay, this this. This signature page is.
Yeah, we don't need that.
I got it, I got them, okay, thank you.
That. Is all she wrote for me, I believe. But I reserve the right to bring something up later.
Sure.
Just in case.
Okay.
Moving through highway engineer, highway department, health department. Building maintenance, Rick is not here, he may be out front. Um, Shelley, are you here to talk about your job? Um, why don't you come on up and let's uh.
Keeper.
Yep.
Probate.
We need to adopt it, we need to look at a change in a job description?
Yes.
Okay.
Pretty detailed.
I know. Want to cover all bases.
There you go.
So Shelley Shelley's proposing a change to a job description for her department, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that.
Just just to interject a little bit, not to overtalk you, but the wage review committee met this morning at seven o'clock and. And listened to Shelley present on the job description along with. Shannon from HR also concurred, and so it's a recommendation from the wage review committee that both council and commissioners uh to approve this. So, anyway.
The job, the 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 wage classification of any five, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, you're fine, actually, that's.
Go ahead, Shelley, thoughts, help us.
Um.
I know we've been talking about this change for a while now, so it's not, it's not new to us.
Since, um, you know, the clerk's office is allowed to have two chief deputies. And so I had actually two chief deputies at one point in time. Well, with one leaving the office, there really was no, um. It would be difficult to appoint another chief deputy in my office, so what I did was I re um. Classified or redid the job description for this open position for the bookkeeper slash probate um deputy. This means that they will be full-time also, but while working mostly all the financial stuff that is that will take off my plate. Big time, um. So they could handle all those issues, which routinely there'll be some errors throughout the month that they could actually catch right then and there where I'm like. At the end of the month trying to figure out where that error had occurred. Um, so they'll be able to totally focus on that, but also learn all the case study or all case types that we currently get in our office. So they're also gonna be learning meat off strings with other duties as well. But the supervisor part of it is because they're gonna be handling the uh financial aspect, that's why they're just up at a supervisory level. So.
What's your uh timeframe for hiring this person?
You you already have the person.
I do not.
You do not, okay.
No, I had to wait.
Position's currently empty.
Yeah, the person's position's currently empty, I waited for approval before, I actually already have two resumes already. Um, waiting on your approval and then we can get going, posting it and going from there.
So this is, this is really the replacement of somebody that has left your department, but a re re-characterization of their job, reclassification of their job.
Correct.
So you won't actually be adding headcount to your department, but you're gonna add a full-time bookkeeper.
Yes, with also knowing case types.
But but when I look at the bookkeeping that goes on a as a as a finance guy. A lot of bookkeeping in that, in your in your area, and I really, I have a lot of respect for. The complexity of what goes on in your office from that perspective, anyway, I don't know a lot about the rest of it. But when I see your report come in every month, it's like, gosh, that's a lot there to keep track of, so.
It is, especially when I'm focused on other duties too, like luckily this year I don't have an election.
Yeah.
When I get audited, like I just had two weeks ago, it took me almost all day to.
Yeah.
State part of accounts, also this child support I get audit, so it it will help me be able to what I have to do, focus on other areas. For the bookkeeper.
I I'm glad, I I certainly have a. I I I get it, I get it.
Specifically, we need to approve the job description for the uh bookkeeper slash probate state deputy clerk. Uh, I I look over to, very comprehensive, very thorough. So, uh, I have no problem with it, with it, Stan.
Good, I'll I'll make a motion that we approve the job description as.
I'll second the motion, Steve.
Okay, motion by Stan, seconded by Doug, that motion passes.
Our thank you very much.
Go find a good one.
I know, exactly.
It only took you two and a half hours to wait on that.
Sorry about that.
Glad you brushed your computer light.
Okay. Still no Rick. Mike, what have you got for us?
Uh, just uh. Get us moving in the right direction.
Sure. A- a- anything relative to those interlocal agreements, because I think hopefully next week you're gonna, we're actually gonna talk. Long-term about how we work with counties, you're gonna bring us a recommendation maybe on how we do that long-term.
Is that what you want?
Next week, if you don't mind, yeah, I I, for one thing, I'd like some time to reach out to town of Geneva and make sure that they are caught blindsided by what we're. What what we're thinking about, and I know I've already spoken with city of Decatur, but I just want a little time before they read it in the paper that what we're gonna do. You know what I mean? Okay.
Have you, have you ever communicated, Mike, have you ever communicated some of these thoughts uh ahead of time to uh council of Geneva or anyone?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, that's.
I don't want, I don't wanna bring some.
I get it, I just wanted to, that would give Steve a little bit of an idea.
I'll give it, I'll give them a heads up, and if they want to be here next week for kind of the presentation, they'd be welcome to do that, but if not. They won't least be blindsided by.
Is there anyone else that besides Geneva?
Town of Geneva, city of Decatur, who else would we want to communicate with, Mike, just to help me get a checklist here?
Monroe wanted to come in here recently.
Monroe.
But I haven't really done any of them.
Right.
It's uh.
Right.
Basically, from Nathan Hunt, Hunter became.
Right.
From city of Decatur doing the pros now, he wants them to be part of our network.
And that's really a, that that's really kind of in that uh in that uh public safety piece of, and so. We have, a- and we've talked a little bit about it, the whole public safety world, the sheriff's department and that flex network and all that stuff. Feels to me like maybe that may be a different consideration than the cities and towns and what goes on there, so. We'll figure it out, just don't want anybody to panic. Right.
Shelley, you want this?
They have to be on our network.
Okay.
And the sheriff said.
He wants them all.
Since that's in one piece of software that they use, they have to be on our network.
I agree, I agree, so that's that's a delicate balance there, we've got to figure out, so. We'll we'll figure that dance out over the next twelve months or so. Good deal, anything else for us? Okay.
Uh, yeah, I I don't have a quote yet, but um. Hardly take backup mechanism is still getting fairly old, but with, and we have to replace it. And I have not seen a quote yet.
That's what you talked to council about this morning.
The other thing of it is, is that we're we're moving away from RSA for some very good reasons, I don't bring that. What those reasons are. But um, everybody is gonna be on our net. The new solution that is called DUAL. And I see two notebooks up there in the starter. You guys will be using our email as too, and you're always gonna need a. Authentication, so anybody who chooses in our email must go on to do a. Multi-factor authentication. We need to put a piece onto those if we can. And I gotta check on your notebooks and see if they.
So we need to just come up and see who knows.
We we will get it. Anybody, if you if you don't have, like, you can't even do it. So.
How much time do we have?
If you got RSA.
Good.
The licensing is. Into an end, so. That's that's the thing that you're gonna have to look at, and and just as a point while I'm talking. The insurance companies here lately, there's about two things that you need to do to keep yourselves safe in their opinion. And that we have to go with what they're telling us. That um. You need to have MFA, multi-factor authentication. And they would prefer it to be on everybody's way down with it. And then um. VPN if you. If you're any of your chief. And boot your cell phones and everything. And we got mostly everyone, they're trying to make attempts that they got their cell phone to try and use it on our network, now just be honest. They'll think that they're not, but they are, they they try to get on one of our public wireless networks. So they're they're using our network. They they would have to have uh VPNs available. Or when they're not on our network, you know, like if they're gonna do banking or anything else. They need to keep their phones protected, and so the insurance companies are basically doing the two things, and so all of our intel unit. We do follow their recommendation if they wanna get some sort of refund. Refunds back or cybersecurity claims. So, if mine stands to this, being in our email. Then you're gonna have to have MFA and we're gonna recommend that. Otherwise, you just can't use our email and can't use it for.
We'll uh, we'll 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 have some time next Tuesday, I don't know whether Sarah would be available, if somebody would be available to take a look at our laptops. We've got solid waste at eight, but I just saw drainage board got canceled at nine, so we'll have some time to kill next Tuesday morning. If she would be available, we have our laptops in here, maybe she can look at them then.
Can be available, then Ethan.
Good.
I kinda pushed them on, get that taken care of.
Very good.
Thank you, Steve, if I could have one second.
Sure.
I did forget something.
Absolutely.
The sheriff's salary contract that the council approved. Uh, prior to this meeting, it also needs commissioner approval.
Do you guys have any questions on that? We heard that presentation.
Any recommendations from Mark on that?
On what?
Sheriff's salary, sheriff's contract.
Already approved it.
Other other than we pay, other than we approve it?
No, that's the latest one that Brooke sent over to us.
Yeah.
We do this every year, so.
I make a motion.
Motion by Stan, seconded by Doug, that motion passes, sheriff, the thing needs to be.
Hey, we'll just need the sheriff to sign his own contract, or you don't have to get us a copy after he signs it.
Good deal.
Don't kill a guy that big man.
Varma and Megan are here again, Steve, and I told them we already took care of all the grants, they're all approved and signed.
Good. Um, you know, this has been a long.
I got the email.
I, I, I didn't get a chance to s- to say thank you for all the work you've done to try and figure out how to fund that, the app that we've been working on. Um, obviously there's more that you considered this morning other than the app, but, uh, I'm excited about getting that going here and figuring out how we can make use of that and, and, uh, so looking forward to that.
Are you guys gonna control that app and decide which departments are on there?
I believe that will be something that we should talk about, uh, for this group of people and decide. I mean, there are a few of them, uh, Shelley, Mike is for sure that probably needs to be in there. But we need to be in there. Health department needs it. So we'll go through the ones that we feel are absolutely necessary. And then, uh, whatever spots are.
Yeah, I've talked to the highway department. I'd like to, I think it makes sense that they be in there, um, so yeah. Sure, I agree.
And there's what, seven or eight departments we could put on, eight, nine, eight, nine.
Nine was what I heard this morning. That, that was a number that I hadn't heard before.
You, you might wanna just touch on what you and I discussed in the hallway a little bit on the future of, of your department and perhaps we're going to have to assume more of the responsibility at the local and state level than what we're used to.
Sure. So Doug went to a meeting.
What's caught up Barb?
Yeah.
Megan caught up.
Doug went to a meeting where Bernie Beer from Allen County EMA director was there. And Bernie's very involved with all the state and federal committees and stuff when it comes to EMA. Uh, but we've also been feeling it now for quite a while too. I'm talking with Dustin Drake, who is our state liaison, lives in Adams County. And we've seen it through the grants tightening up. I mean, it's been the last three years we've gotten denied on things we've asked for, which were all very legitimate things that the county needs for first responders. But what the grants have done is each of their grants has always had a category, but they are shortening up that category now. So like things that used to be able to get equipment, training and planning on the HMVP, like no more equipment. You can't get equipment anymore. You can't ask for that. You can only get training and planning. So it's like every grant that we do has gotten tighter. Uh, the money has not gone away, but it's just much more difficult to be able to get it.
Not only that, but it's opening up to more than just EMA.
Right. It used to just be EMAs that could apply for this money.
Oh.
Then maybe three or four years ago, they opened it up to like sheriff's departments can apply, firefighters can apply, EMS could apply. So it's like anybody could apply for these, this same little amount of grant money now. So.
Well, and maybe throughout the state, maybe there's a lot of counties that don't have the strong emergency management agency that we have the time to have in this county. And so, you know, that, they were probably looking for opportunities to
Right.
to do what you do for all of our emergency services.
So another thing that has happened is the state, like a lot of other businesses, have had to reduce their workforce. So Dustin Drake used to have district three, which was eleven counties. Now he has district two and three for about twenty-five counties. One guy covers instead. It's just like everything else.
Yeah.
They've just tightened everything down so much. And, uh, you know, they're talking about, you know, completely getting rid of some of the Dustin Drake responsibilities now. Um, it's just happening. But what, what Doug said is that forces us as a county to try to find alternate funding if we need money or to take more responsibility on ourselves as far as training and
Right.
that kind of thing goes, which you can never stop doing the trainings. I mean.
There have been some interesting, um, uh, public service announcements running on TV lately about, uh, hazardous material spills and the training that it takes in order to be prepared for something like that. It's been really, I think, hopefully enlightening the public on the, uh, the importance of what you all are responsible for and the things that you hope and pray never happen, but you have to be prepared for anyway.
Well, and this is kind of a long reach, but it's been brought up at lots of our district meetings. You know, very few people know what EMA is or what EMA does, and they really don't care as long as something doesn't happen.
Right.
Whatever. But, uh, there are counties out there that are encouraging, and I know I would get poo-pooed for, for even saying this, but for training county employees. So for instance, like the training app that Shannon has that she sends out, like when we have to do sexual harassment and all that stuff.
Right.
There are counties that are actually sending out like, um, one and two, um, I'm trying to think of the classes. Like there's a whole series of classes that EMA takes and you can take them all online, they're free. But it really, what it does is break down, like just for yourself at home, what, what should you be prepared for? How to handle a situation? Who do you contact? Who, who shouldn't you contact? Those types of things. But some of the counties are requesting, they can't demand, but requesting the like people in the health department, you guys, um, Tony's department, take some of these very basic EMA classes. It's our ICS, ICS, thank you, I can't think. But it's the ICS.
Should we keep the young?
Yeah, I know. She's, she's my memory. So there's like ICS one hundred and it goes all the way up to eight hundred. Um, you know, and they suddenly get more in-depth with EMA, but even just to have people take one and two, which would take like a total of two hours online. I think it would enlighten people, but I don't think you'll ever gonna get people to do that here.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the public's aware that things are changing on your end.
Yes, they are.
We may have to assume more responsibilities in the future than what we do now.
Yeah.
And, uh, when that time comes, it's not, hey, surprise. Okay?
Yeah. You know, and, uh, I don't remember when John was here that we did so much door knocking to try to get money, but since Megan and I have been here, there's been a lot of things that we want that we couldn't get or didn't have in our budget. So we've, we've gone around and asked people for help.
Yeah.
And for the most part, people have donated something. So
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure your board is.
Yeah.
Stan, I think, sits on your board. I'm sure that they're fully aware of some of the changes that might be coming to.
Stan and Corey both come regularly to our meetings, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna get tougher. It really is.
Okay, thanks Barb.
Thanks ladies. Thanks for your work. Looking forward to seeing that app start to develop. I'm excited about that.
One more thing, speaking of that, I sent you an email because you have to sign off on it.
Okay, I'll get her done. Thanks. Ian, you've been sitting over there patiently. You must have something to talk about with us.
I do, I'm not only.
Come on up.
Glad we take this opportunity. I just have a press release, I guess, uh, more of an informational thing here for now. Uh, last Thursday, the steering committee met at the West End and, uh, came up with a suggestion. And typed this up this morning in a hurry. So if there's any typos or anything, it's, I apologize. But, uh, blame it on word. Essentially, um, in the past, you see, you look down about midway where it says restricted fund approved uses. In the past, the committee has picked three or four areas in that group there, that paragraph, and said, these are the things we're gonna focus on. And last week, the committee did something a little different and the committee decided, you know what? If you have a project that you're going to do in Adams County, that the opioid restricted uh, approved uses, uh, if it's within the realm of those, apply for funding. We're not gonna limit it to three or four different areas, but any, anything that the attorney general has said can be used, that money can be used for. And so, um, we have, uh, created a form, uh, pretty simple text boxes, fill it out. Um, it's available through me, uh, and it, the grant has been opened, or the request for funding has been opened until December fifth at eleven fifty-nine PM. Um, and grant proposals are not to exceed up to a hundred thousand dollars. Obviously less is better. Um, but, and then the, at the bottom, there's a list of things that the attorney general's office says, we cannot use restricted funds to, to pay for. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, also let the public know that, um, this is limited, this is not limited to anyone. It's just anyone in Adams County or going to be doing work in Adams County that would like to seek funding from the commissioners for the opioid settlements restricted funds.
So you're running to, you've already contacted the media for this press release?
We are here today to make the media aware. We've also sent out through our contacts through community corrections and drug for Adams County, um, agencies that may be interested in seeking funding. So.
There you go, story it.
And, and I, I, I guess just, we've talked about the funds that were gonna be made available this year and we've set that at.
You, the commissioner set up to one hundred thousand dollars.
One hundred thousand dollars. So up to one hundred thousand dollars is available out of the restricted funds.
Correct.
That's Adams County, just Adams County.
Right. The non-restricted funds, we don't talk a lot about those. How, what's your perspective on the non-restricted funds?
Well, you've had Rob Parker here talking to you about the jail program.
Right.
Uh, obviously, we believe that's a good thing and, and it's still in its development. Um, if Rob were to apply for a hundred thousand dollars in the restricted funds, I, it would qualify for that.
Right.
But it would limit any other agency. And so my opinion, and just my opinion, and I'm only speaking for myself, would be why not look at your unrestricted fund that has enough money to cover that for the next year? Even though unrestricted can be used for anything, I still think that in the grand scheme of things, what this money is coming to Adams County for, restricted or unrestricted, we should try to do what's best with it. So that's my opinion. Um, ultimately, it's up to you. I mean.
There's a lot more flexibility, but the intent is still the same.
Correct.
The intent of the funds was to combat drug abuse and.
Right, which is the only other purchase that has been done and made out of that unrestricted fund was for the sheriff, for the, the drones that he purchased. And again, the purpose of those dron- drones, you fall right into that for.
Why, I, I think you just have a great, so you've built a great, um, process by which we can assess the validity and the, 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 the value of these types of programs through the grant program. And when I'm thinking, I, I, I don't just perceive what you're getting to be limited to the restricted fund. So I think you're, you're spot on when you say we should be considering our unrestricted funds to be utilized in a similar fashion.
Right. And I think when you say you, you mean we, because this is, I mean, this is Adams County and I think Adams County is a model for the state as to how we have decided to use these funds in a fair way in our community, uh, with opportunity for anyone who wants to do better. So, um, again, I'm, I'm proud of it. I think it's a great process and, and I'm glad we're, we, we are all working together.
I had nothing to do with it, but I'm proud of it as well.
You did, because you gave the local J-Rac committee the opportunity to oversee this and make recommendations to you. And you could have said, this is what we're gonna do with this money, because I believe there are counties out there that said that and, and didn't make it available to all, so.
Well, I appreciate that Stan is actively involved in that and appreciate his involvement there and obviously your leadership there is, is invaluable.
Thank you.
It was an interesting discussion. We, you know, kind of in full disclosure, there are a couple of people sitting on the opioid steering committee that, that may be asking or may have a request for those funds too. So, so I, I think the overall, the, the J-Rac committee and the, and the opioid steering committee is, is gonna be very respectful of that and objective and, and just try to make the, the best recommendation that that committee can make for the, for the best benefit of it, so.
You said that it's a good committee. The future looks bright for some time to come on this. Didn't you say thirty-eight or something?
Correct. Yeah. Now, there may be years where we aren't giving a hundred thousand out because we won't be able to sustain, sustain that unless the other settlements that Tony has signed in for, you know.
Thirty-eight's a long, that's, that's a long way out.
But on the other hand, if, if we've got good projects that, that we can front-load to get that project on its feet, I'm not opposed to that either. I mean, even if it means, you know, decreasing our, 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 uh, opportunities in the next years. If, if we can front-load good projects now to just really, uh, doing good things.
Me as well. That's, you know, that's, uh, just, just because the grant funding goes away doesn't mean the project, that, that program dries up. We, that's on us then to figure out great, great projects need support regardless of whether the grant money's available or not.
Absolutely.
Just strong enough, it'll continue.
It will. I agree.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
Good. Thanks Ian.
Yep. How much money did the legislature spend here?
I don't have that in front of me. I'm thinking it's.
It's still whatever it was I gave everybody last week.
Twenty-one, thirty, somewhere, a hundred, only a hundred, thirty, yeah. Maybe more, maybe one fifty.
I've got it now, but.
I thought I had it here some.
At the wheel for the Allen County. That the county has already received. Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, I've got the payments this year, but I don't have the total. It's a good committee.
Yeah.
If we don't find it right now, I can, soon I get up in the office.
Oh, okay, I can look up.
It would be the same amount if you printed a story last week about it, it'd be the same amounts.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Cause it came up last week and, wasn't it last week?
One or two weeks ago, yeah.
Wherever it was, we had those amounts and presented them at that meeting, so it would still be the same as those.
Whenever Rob was here, we pummeled out how much was available.
Right, right. Good deal. Thanks Ian.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Mark, what have you, and Clayton got up your sleeve for us today?
Not a whole lot. Go ahead. I'll go first. Resolution. This, this resolution here? Is it a resolution or does it need to be an ordinance? Cause if, if it's just a resolution, then put it down. So is this, this is just a resolution, model resolution?
Well, I had to do a lot of changes.
Oh, they did.
I did. Well, just cause I cite the Indian code, but I think you guys met with, uh, Colvin. And, um, it's about last week, um, talked about opting into the housing optimizers pre-construction grant program. Uh, he provided a template from, I think that grant program, uh, I've obviously sent a more updated one that actually cites the relevant Indian code. Um, the, I'd say the template was pretty barren, so, um, put a little bit more time into it. Um, yeah, I didn't know, um, if there needed to be any discussion on this. I know based on Colvin's representations, the, the city of Decatur has already, um, adopted a similar resolution. I'm sure, I'm sure he went through it with you all, you know, it's not necessarily a commitment other than you're committing to, um, the fact that you're formally opting into that grant program and thereby, um, committing to all of, uh, committing to all the requirements set forth to be, to be eligible for that program. You know, from, from my research, I, I know that in the past, the county has opted into similar programs. I think a lot of those programs came through, you know, the hub, whatever it was called. Um, I think, you know, there's, I can see upsides to, to grants for sure, but also downsides sometimes to what they try to throw at you related to the requirements, so.
From, from what you've looked at it, does it look like we would currently meet the requirements of the program or would we have to change anything in order to meet the requirements? Or have, have you looked at that part of it?
I have not, no, I have not. Uh, I have not specifically.
We'd have to stand on our head and no boy.
No, I think the biggest, um, the biggest from a legal standpoint, what I've obviously identified is that if if we opt into this type of program because the funds are more they're obviously, they're 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 based on pre-construction. Kind of affordable housing in the pre-construction, so that's more aimed towards, you know, engineering, anything that's anything prior to the actual construction.
But as far as a county entity, I mean, there we we would meet the.
Yes, and I am, I'm sure that they would provide us with any other eligibility requirements. The one eligibility requirement, obviously, if we ever are to receive funds that we would have to create some specific type of fund, the the auditor would have to have a line item fund for that.
We have to name a uh, an agency that would
That's right.
That that we would work through, if I'm not mistaken.
A five oh one C.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you have to, you have to choose basically, yeah, like an an agency or an administrative body to work through. Again, I mean, I'm more than happy, obviously, this was kind of, um, this was sent to our office after the fact last week, so I I did.
We got until, yeah, we had till the end of the year.
Sure, you have until December twenty sixth.
And and the fund calculator indicates that the county would perhaps would be two hundred forty four thousand four seventeen available, doesn't mean you have to spend it all. But if you don't, if we opt in and we do nothing, then that those funds that we might be entitled to would get spread out through.
Or if we don't opt in, they'll they'll get reallocated.
Right, right.
It doesn't create any direct obligation.
Doesn't feel like it hurts us to me.
No, no, we have, it's win-win, you might as well get into, get into games.
Yeah, get in the discussion anyway.
Right.
I think this resolution just keeps us in the discussion.
Yeah, and so I would move, uh, you have a resolution number, Clayton?
It'd be nine, right, Tony?
Yes, number nine.
Okay, I moved that we approve resolution twenty twenty five dash nine. The opt into the uh, pre-construction grant.
Good.
I'll second.
Stan, motion by Doug, seconded by Stan, that motion passes.
Uh, well, it's just a fun calc, the fun calculator indicated that uh.
So if you want to just put nine and sign that one.
In Adams County, it'd be have to be a a community over, yeah. That would show what Decatur and what Adams County.
That's what Colton gave us.
They're going to sign that resolution.
Also, we got four, Mark, Clayton?
Got a couple of uh, certificate of appointment that we need to do these before the end of the year, turn of the year. Uh, for some reason, all three of them are coming up now. Uh, Brooke sent them over to be approved now. I think they're all, I think they're all through twenty twenty six, except for thirty first, twenty twenty six now.
Because the county one, on their behalf, suggested this this morning.
Tony.
And the other two are commissioners.
A side note is, we've we've kind of designated Colton Beck on Economic Development to be the the point, the point agency on this whole grant.
They wanted to zigzag.
It's a military term.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, yeah, that's not the most popular position to be in.
Point, point means first one shot at.
Or first one to shoot.
First round to shoot, yeah.
Yeah, these are just two uh.
Two appointments.
Two appointments, I can point on Stan, but it's. The difference I saw in those margins, it says continuing at the pleasure of the board. Yep, that's the thing that changed. Yeah, and on some of those, that's how we we're going to do those.
So they won't be for a fixed term?
Well, it's continuing at the at the pleasure of the board during twenty twenty six. Yes, so this is a an appointment for Max Beer uh, to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Uh, commencing as a member commencing January one, twenty twenty six, uh, continuing at the pleasure of the board during twenty twenty six. The same thing for Rex King, uh, Property Tax Assessment Board of the Year.
Continents, pleasure of the board, is that the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Yep.
So need a motion to approve both of those.
They have to come back starting in twenty seven, I guess, for whoever.
I move we make the appointments as stated, Max Bear, Rex King, I think it was.
By Doug, seconded by Stan, that motion passes to reappoint you there, Max and.
Yeah, unless unless the law requires a fixed term, then we don't need to do that.
Are these reappointments, they're already on?
Yeah. I just have a State Board of Accounts, I gotta make a change to this letter for Tony, then I'll get this over for the State Board of Accounts audit.
I forgot to remind Julie Marie this morning, I also heard, you know, once you see her, I want not to forget it.
Yep.
Get that out. You all should have received the invite to that exit conference. We already have the required, wouldn't you, plenty?
Anything else for us, Mark?
Well, I'm gonna take a look at this uh. We talked about the land out here. County owns out by the jail and those tracks to the north. In particular, that one track to the north is um twenty four acres. So I guess the question is if you'd be interested in in, you know, having maybe a portion of that track be you know, sold off for commercial use. I guess that's really up to you, to you gentlemen. I mean, we can pursue that.
Commercial use would, does commercial use mean possibly housing?
No, not housing, business.
I I guess I'd like to have a discussion on that. I I feel like we've got a piece of property there that's really ripe for uh, residential development also. And I and I I don't disagree with your thought process on on doing the trade to open up to Village Green Drive there onto our property. I I think that's a very good idea. But I I guess I'd like to just step back for a minute and just look at that piece of property as a whole. And and uh, take take a little bit to consider um, the value being right on the city limits and an opportunity, I I mean, I I've had just some real minimal experience in residential development. And it's just really strong, a strong opportunity there. So I and and I I don't disagree with your thought process, but I I guess I'd like to step back and just take a second look at that.
I kind of agree with Stan, you know, that might be, might be an area where uh, let's discuss the uh two hundred forty four thousand, that might be an area that could be utilized, uh, some of those funds could be utilized. It could even, those funds could even be combined with the cater's funds. So I don't.
I mean, just the last couple of years, I've built some houses and then they're sold before I get them done. You know, in uh, you know, in the area code four, six, seven, three, three, somebody, one of the realtors told me, there's only like a total of nineteen properties or so. So I, but I I really like your idea of doing some kind of trade there to to complement Village Green Drive onto our property, so I so I don't, even though I don't disagree with your thought process, I guess I'd like.
Not ready to pull, not ready to pull the trigger on selling any evidence, so we have a more of a picture of how we would use the whole track land.
Yeah, I I guess, because we've had a real good uh, survey and stuff that Brett Miller did for us and.
Well, is the commercial part, Mark, just a question. Is there, is there still availability and in in the uh, what was called industrial park out where uh Fleetwood has their, out that direction where there's all kind of commercial businesses, is there still properties out there available for development out there?
Yeah, I believe so.
I think I think this particular business, though, that 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 particular site is is really interesting to them.
It is.
And they already own that one acre.
Right.
They own that one acre that it that comes right off of the road that we would use to get in there. Um, I I think, and I'm not asking for you to prove anything today at all, at all, I just wanted to bring it back up, let's have a have a discussion. And I think you you would need to look at and you you will obviously look at all of that property that the county owns in that area for development, and it's probably makes the most sense for it to be some sort of mixed development. You know, maybe some commercial, some uh, apartment uh, type housing.
Single family.
Multi-family. Um, I I think in Miller's survey, he had an apartment complex laid out here, over here on this track that's uh, next to Homestead.
Right.
And so it may, maybe it's it's that type of housing and not necessarily single family. Um, because you've got that forty acre track uh, down here, which if you had access over to the uh, road over there, which is what?
High Street.
High Street, and we've talked about that numerous times, that in that area I could see being more of a single family type development. Um, generally, when you're close to commercial uh, property, then you'll see more apartments multi, you know, villas and things like that as opposed to single family. If you look at this track, that twenty four acre track that the county has, you know, it's right across, everything that's across from it is already commercial. You know, it's all, you know, it's Hall Baker floor covering is there, you've got um, you know, everything's commercial right across the road.
The only thing we need to also, you know, be be always cautious of of uh, you know, we own that property now, we don't know around the jail. You never know what the future might hold, and once you sell it, it's sold. But but I I'm I'm not against looking seriously into something of this nature.
Well, I think the county, I think you would want to hold on to um, at least five acres, maybe ten acres immediately north of the jail, adjacent to your other property, just don't sell it.
Right. Right, I mean, that's why we bought that property out there to begin with, we had visions for.
If if I'm not mistaken, I think in the in kind of that concept that Brett did for us, the the property you're talking about, he did lay out as light, like like as commercial or light industrial. So that was in his thought, that was more aligned with commercial use than it was residential use. Obviously, we got, that was just one person's concept, so.
I had a short discussion with Clayton last week, I was kind of wanting to bend his ear a little bit. And one of the things that may have to happen before anything happens there is uh, whether that would have to go to public auction to sell any of that off or you know, whether parts could be sold off privately or, you know, if if we would want to control any of that as far as, you know, putting putting streets or infrastructure there prior to sale or just offer property for sale, uh, if if we wanted to get rid of it. Obviously, the county government are not developers. But, you know, if if we start piecing off piece by piece, whether that would devalue the the property rather than selling it as an entire uh, lot. So I I I think we've got options right now and I think Mark's brought a very good option for us to to make the property more usable, so I'm not against that.
Good. Why not? Obviously, Mark, I think what we're what we're saying is we don't know.
But it just, it needs more discussion.
Yep, I agree.
And uh, yeah, in order to sell it, you would uh, it, I mean, obviously you could do an auction, but normally in something like this, you're going to get an appraisal. And you're going to sell it on the basis of appraised value. And you're right, it has a different value pre-developed versus after it's developed. And generally, the county's not in the business of developing.
You know, that's um, certainly what what um, what we don't know is how other governmental units have worked through public-private partnerships to help develop a a tract of land versus just a building site. Um, you know, lots of times that it feels to me like that the impediment to that is all the infrastructure, the investment in infrastructure's got to go in before you can actually start building house.
Yep.
Uh, so maybe there's something that we can do for a public-private partnership or 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 a a an R F P or R F Q uh, uh, out to developers that ha- give us your thoughts on what you would like to do here and what we would need to do. I I just don't know how that works.
Maybe American Structure Point and their surveys are finding some, maybe somebody's putting some that could go out there.
Maybe. Or or it could come out of that vision plan, what what that, I think there'll be some several subcommittees come out of that vision plan that and one of them will definitely be housing. Um, to work with a housing subcommittee that would actually kind of flush out the general recommendations that would come out of the vision plan. Okay, anything else, Mark?
Uh, no. Uh, I I had another real estate question. And I can, I mean, it's nothing we have to decide on, but uh, I was asked to consider uh, from Dean Arnold called me and asked about the possibility of some, an additional strip of ground along the driveway holding the house, just just to make their access easier to their property. So I I don't know how that looks or what we would have to talk about with if we, because I think Josh owns that adjacent property and so whether that's something we want to discuss as far as.
Is Dean afraid we're going to sell that and he'll have limited access to his farm ground?
No, I think it would just help him with his equipment to have a a better and different access.
Could we do something short of of actually selling him the ground that tells him to use what he, use what he wants, I'm thinking an easement or something that would give him legal right to to use that property short of survey and title work and everything that goes with selling that piece of ground.
I I mean, I'd I'd be happy to talk to him, try and get more specifics or whatever, but i- is that something that we could or should entertain as far as?
Yeah, I'll be looking up here real quick.
I, from my perspective, I want to make sure that he's got the access he needs in order to I mean, he's got a huge investment out there in that ground and he, this equipment just keeps getting bigger and bigger and getting it through the old, the old accesses.
And when we talked on the phone, I didn't get an exact picture of what exactly he wanted, so.
Right.
So if you guys are open, I can talk to him again and.
Or is he wanting more uh, more room? Are you talking about where he goes across the ditch?
Yeah, well, e- even coming off the road, that's why I I wish I had a better idea.
Because as far as access off the road, he's got
His old road front is.
Well, he's got three hundred twenty nine feet.
Yeah.
A road frontage, so I don't, I mean, he must be talking about access to that back part that's over across the open ditch.
And there's a.
Do you want me to kind of go over with them again or?
Figure out what he does, we we want to make sure he's got what he can.
And may and maybe he's wanting uh, yeah, I I don't, I don't know. I mean, he's got to get over the ditch and the only place to get over that.
But I. But I, you know, if, if it works out that we can help him out with an additional strip of ground or something, I. I guess I wouldn't be opposed to that. I don't think it'd hurt the value of the rest of the eleven acres, but.
Yeah, we just need to see what he's talking about.
I'll, I'll see if I can get together with him and kinda draw something out, so we've got more.
Yeah, we could always give him just an easement for ingress, egress.
Yeah, if that's all he wants and.
Yeah.
Does he come, does he get into that uh field to the east by coming through uh the drive at Solid Waste?
Well, that's what I don't know, cause he said, oh, it's such a nice drive there, and so I don't know if he's.
Is that what he's talking about? So, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Hey, figure out what he needs, Stan, and we, we wanna accommodate him.
Oh, I'll talk to him some more and, and see exact, if, if I can pin it down a little bit more. Exactly what he's looking at, so.
Any, any updates on the fiber optic Z O or whatever their, whatever their name is?
Yeah, we're um, I'm meeting with Brad here tomorrow and we gotta look at some more records.
Okay.
So right now, that's still.
Still trying to find the right, right uh access through the, through the county.
Yeah, I sent an email to the attorney that represents several of the landowners yesterday and I was probably call her today and let her know where we're at.
Okay. Anything else, anybody?
I don't.
I think through attorneys, I think from the public, guys, Ed? We're running short on public out there.
We, we missed you last week, uh, but yeah.
I'd rather you've been sent out with the flu. Than here with the flu. Okay, anything else? If not, uh, Shannon, do you have anything for us? Okay. Okay, that's what we're looking for.
Second.
Motion by Stan, seconded by Doug, word earned.